This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Southampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 20th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter, Channel 193, and live streaming in their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councilor participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended on the March 2025, which allow us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remote remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of this meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski. Dave Munier. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zarrett.
Present.
Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the fact that the United States is America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before approving the minutes, I just want to ask for a moment of silence for one of our consulars laws, his daughter. In respects to Megan and Consulor Kuzinski, I will ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of September 6.
For move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of September 6. And if there's a discussion, seeing none, those who are in favor.
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes. Public speak time. Is anyone here? This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic not listed on the public hearing. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name is Eric Pullen. I live in Precinct 2. Full disclosure, I am a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, but I am speaking tonight as a private citizen. My viewpoints are my own, and they do not reflect the views of the full commission or the department. You'll likely hear tonight during council communications about how the River Roads Festival and Mill Pond Live were tremendously successful events that were held in town recently, and by many, many metrics, this is absolutely true. These are great events and really positive things for the city. However, I feel a little bit more information needs to be shared with the council to gain a full picture of these events, and I worry that this may not happen otherwise. So Lottable Productions rented Millside Park for a total of four days, September 9th for the River Roads Festival, and September 15th, 16th, and 17th for Mill Pond Live. Now, Mill Pond Live has been a successful event in town for many years. Attendees are asked to pay, or asked for donations at the door to support the event. However, no attendees are ever turned away for an inability to pay. It appears that over the years, these donations and sponsors that Lottable Productions have obtained, as well as a GoFundMe that happened during the pandemic, have enabled the event to be sustainable for many years for the promoters. However, the River Roads Festival was a slightly different type of event. The River Roads Festival charged an admission price of $65 per person. The capacity of Millside Park is 2,500 people, and the event was sold out. This means the event grossed, according to my math, a total of about $162,500 in one day, while paying the standard rental fee to the Parks Department of $350. Park security was also hired for the event, so add approximately another $300 to that total, which brings the total paid to the Parks Department of about $650. I have a little bit of a challenging time reconciling this. Now, I realize that promoters need to pay for the acts to perform. They brought in a great lineup, they brought in many national acts, they have to pay for sound equipment, sound engineers, staging, et cetera. But it appears that a private business made a tremendous amount of money by utilizing public taxpayer-funded space and resources. And I also have a little bit of a hard time wrapping the head around a public park being entirely closed off for a private event. These are really, really great events to have in East Hampton, and I don't think anyone would argue that point, and I'm certainly not trying to make that point as well. But I really don't think it can be overlooked that this is a private company that is operating a for-profit business for next to nothing while utilizing taxpayer resources. My hope is that festivals such as this continue to thrive in East Hampton while also paying their fair share. If you consider, the entirety of the Parks Recreation Department budget for this year is approximately $270,000. Lottable Productions grossed nearly two-thirds of that in one single day. You know, I just sincerely hope that we can do better with vendor contracts utilizing public space going forward. I thank you all for your time, I thank you for listening, I hope you have a great rest of your evening. Counselor Kuzinski, my heart goes out to you. Megan was a dear friend, and I'm really just tremendously sorry for your loss. Thank you all.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else? Anyone who's participating remote? Seeing none, communication from elected officials, board, and committee, Eli? We have a presentation by the Commission on Disability.
All right, yeah. Thank you very much for allowing me to give this presentation. My name is Eli Damon, I'm the vice chair of the Commission on Disability. By the way, we are looking for new members, so if any listeners would like to apply, we'd be grateful for that. So in 2021, we conducted a disability experience survey. And I'm here to tell you about what we found from that survey. It did, unfortunately, took us a while to figure out what, how we wanted to report on it. But we are grateful that we can finally do that. All right, so the purpose of this survey was to identify barriers to participation in the community. So what possible uses for that? Well, we can offer better guidance on disability issues, which is what the purpose of the Commission on Disability is supposed to be in the first place. We can use it to apply for grants to improve access, and we can craft more equitable policy. So we intended the survey for disabled members of the East Hampton community, so that includes not only residents, but workers and visitors, et cetera. And we've got 69 responses, which I am told for a survey like this is higher than should be expected. So for context, in Massachusetts, disabled people living in the community constitute 11.5% of the population, or 1 in 9. And here, living in the community is as opposed to living in a total institution, so that doesn't include people who are in prison or nursing homes or things like that. All right, so just a little bit about the process of conducting the survey. So we, as a starting point, we started with a survey that was given in Cambridge, England, and we adapted the questions from that. We deployed it using, we deployed it online using Microsoft Forms, which the city was subscribed to at the time. We also, we also made printed copies for people who, for whatever reason, could not use the, fill it out online, and we created an email address that people could contact us to ask questions or ask for the survey in some other format. And we promoted it on Facebook and by putting flyers up around town. Okay, so the survey had 66 questions. We estimated it would take 20 to 30 minutes to fill out. Forty-nine of them were multiple choice, and 17 were open text response questions. And they covered, they covered subjects including overall experience, city government website, accessibility of venues and facilities, resources for aid, social and emotional health, safety, and demographics. And for the analysis, we looked at the automated summary that Microsoft Forms gave us, which gave us the breakdown from the multiple choice questions. And then separately, I did an analysis of the open text responses. And what I did is, for each question, I took, I looked at all of the responses, many of them kind of covered several different things, so I broke them up into their kind of atomic parts, and I looked for similarities, right? And then I said, what kind of natural categories do they fall into? And then I identified those categories, and I, right, and then I counted up how many were in each category, and also, some of the categories were very broad, so I also then identified what kind of elements within that category were covered. And you'll see what that looks like shortly. All right, so the one, all right, so there are a lot of kind of small, kind of little interesting things about the survey, but the one really kind of undeniable, like overwhelming message we got from it was about our transportation network. And so that is, that is what I'll be, that is what I'll be talking about, what that, everything, everything the respondents said about our transportation network and what message that conveys. So, so for example, excuse me a minute, for example, in this question, the question was, "How accessible are the following outdoor spaces? And I can use them or go there without a problem, with some difficulty or minimal support, with great difficulty or support, or not at all?" So for example, in the category of roads, for the question, for roads and streets, you can see about 1 in 5 people said, "Only with great difficulty or support or not at all", right? And for sidewalks and crosswalks, about a third of the respondents said, "Only with great difficulty or support or not at all." All right, so now here's one of the open text responses. So the question was, "What accessibility-related challenges do you face on a day-to-day basis in East Hampton?" And here, the largest category of responses was sidewalks and crosswalks. Twenty-seven of the responses mentioned them, that's 39%, or about 1 in 3 of the responses. And they, they mentioned a variety of different, of different issues, such as no sidewalks on some streets, no crosswalks on some streets, no curb cuts on some sidewalks, sidewalks are too narrow, uneven sidewalk surface, insufficient sightlines at crosswalks, no visual or auditory pedestrian signals, walk phases are too short, inadequate traffic controls for safe crossing, damage to sidewalk surface, vegetation encroaches on crosswalks, snow and ice is not cleared or only partially cleared. That one, by the way, is a recurring issue in our commission meetings. It's, there's been a lot of complaints about it, and people consider it one of an especially serious problem. Also, curb cuts obstructed by delivery trucks, and motorists do not yield at crossings. So, yeah, and also in this, I'd like to point out, in this question, this question was very general, so people could have talked about anything, not necessarily transportation-related, but a third of them decided to talk about sidewalks and crosswalks. All right, so here's another question. "If East Hampton were to undertake a single large project to improve the life of disabled people, regardless of cost, what would you want that project to be?" So, again, a very broad question. And here, again, the largest category of responses, I decided to call sidewalks and roadways because it was mostly sidewalks and crosswalks, but there were a few other responses that I really thought belonged in that category, so I gave it a slightly broader, broader name. And there are 22 responses to this question that mentioned sidewalks and roadways, or again, about a third. And people mentioned things that were very similar to responses to the other, the question I just mentioned before. So people said, "Fix, improve roadways, sidewalks, safe crossing for hearing and vision impaired, speed bumps on Clark Street or Franklin Street, bring back crossing flags, more sidewalks, wayfinding for visually impaired, make sidewalks ADA accessible, fix light by Riverside Industries, sidewalks on both sides of North Hampton Street, better bike lanes, add sidewalks to crosswalk, add lights to crosswalks, widen sidewalks, new better crosswalk markings." So a lot of very similar, similar responses. Okay, in this same, there are a few other transportation-related categories of responses for the same question. So this is the same question. "If East Hampton were to undertake a single large project to improve the life of disabled people regardless of cost, what would you want that project to be?" So six people mentioned parking, and they said more, more parking. Some of them specified accessible parking, some specified on-street parking, and some didn't specify anything other than just parking. Okay, and same question, five people mentioned public transportation. They said things like, "Expand bus service to more neighborhoods, accessible buses, expand senior van service to under 50, public taxi service, carpool network, integrate transportation with events." So for, right, so that, right, if it's hard for people, even if the event itself is accessible, right, if people can't get to the event, then it's not really accessible to them. Okay, and for every, every question that I did this analysis for had an other category, which is just one-off responses that didn't kind of fit with any other responses. So for that category, there's one, one answer that I highlighted, "Public bathroom near pond with menstrual products." And I highlighted that, one, because it is a transportation issue, and two, because it has come up. Other people have complained about it, and has come up in our meetings, that people don't feel like it's safe for them to travel because they don't feel like they have reliable access to bathrooms. Okay. I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know how to make these overlays go away. So here we have another question. "Do you feel safe on the streets of East Hampton?" So, you can see, maybe, and we had two questions, one was during the day and during the night. So about a fifth of the people said that they don't feel safe on the streets of East Hampton during the day, about a third said they don't feel safe on the streets of East Hampton at night. And of course, if you don't feel safe on the streets, that's kind of a transportation problem, right? How are you going to get anywhere if you're not safe on the streets? So, and then we followed up with an, with an open text question. So, "What makes you feel unsafe on East Hampton streets during the day? What makes you feel unsafe on East Hampton streets at night?" And the answers to these two were similar enough that I combined them into one analysis. So 10 responses again mentioned sidewalks and crosswalks as the reason they felt unsafe on the streets. Seven said, "It's too dark at night, the lighting is poor." Six said, "Bad motorist behavior." So we also heard that before as well. Two said, "Police harassment." Two said, "Street harassment," so that's by just random strangers. And then we, oh, sorry, I have not been advancing this for you. So there's, there's that slide, police harassment and street harassment, and then, okay, and then the other, the other category. So this is, this is not my computer, so I don't know how to display this the way I want it to, but.
It's working.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. So, and then for the other category, we had, there are certain parts of town I would classify as unsafe due to lack of police presence, getting lost, perhaps parking only on one side of buildings on Cottage Street, being a woman alone in general feels unsafe at night, though East Hampton is not particularly dangerous or seedy. Okay. So what can we conclude from this? Well, so even in context where respondents could have written about anything, a third of them chose to write about transportation issues. So to me, this suggests a widespread frustration about our transportation network here in East Hampton. Also, transportation-related complaints mentioned a wide range of general aspects of the transportation network, not just, not just specific projects or specific locations that, so this is kind of a broad, to me, this suggests, it's a broad problem with the network. It's not just like little isolated things that can be fixed, that can be easily fixed. So what, what can we do about this? So again, I think this, this is a problem that doesn't have an easy fix. It's something where we need to come up with new kinds of policies, new ways to do things. We need to have kind of a conversation that brings in the whole community and, you know, makes use of everyone's experience, their areas of expertise, their creativity, to come up with new ideas and, and build, you know, and develop consensus around those ideas. And that's, that's, that's what I think, that's what I think really needs to happen, and it's a, obviously, a very, a very hard thing to do, but I think if we, if we could do that, it would be, it would be very, it would be very rewarding. And also, for the commission's part, we are, we are planning a follow-up survey that once we, once we are ready to do that, we will, we will deploy it. And that, that is the end. Again, thank you for your time, and if I can, please let me know if there's any questions I can answer.
Thank you, Eli. Any councilor have any comments or questions to Eli? Consulor Zarrett?
This is very helpful, thank you. I agree with you that there's a lot of feedback that deserves answers, but it sounds like it's not a complicated, straightforward fix, especially, you know, I mean, I can speak both as someone who thinks about this and the chair of the Public Safety Committee, that oftentimes, I mean, certainly our city and many cities have infrastructure that's just not well-equipped to adapt to obvious needs of accessibility all around. I'm curious if there's toolkits from the state that give examples around some of these issues, and also what, if there's next steps or grants available for like a broad consultant or something like that.
Yeah, so I don't know the answer, but the problem that I've, I've been having with the whole, the current way we're, way we do things, is that, yeah, we apply for a grant to, or Jeff Bag applies for a grant to fix one, one little spot, right? One, one intersection. And it takes, you know, and then maybe three years later, right? That one intersection gets fixed, but there's no way to, so, but that doesn't really solve the problem in the long term, because, you know, more problem, more problems come up faster, and we'll never have even most of the things fixed that way. And it also really doesn't address the problem in the short term, right? There are still people struggling, right, while, while that whole process is going on, and we're not doing anything to help them. And so that's why I said we really need to come up with a new, a new kind of policy to deal with this.
Contrary? Riley?
So Eli, I just wanted to thank you for this presentation. You know, sometime, I don't know if it was the very beginning of this year, or if it was last year, we also had a consultant come in and, you know, deliver some assessments and recommendations on how our public facilities fare in terms of accessibility. And this is as helpful of a presentation as that was. So, you know, I just wanted to first extend a thank you to the entire Commission on Disability for doing this work, it was really insightful. So, you know, I think the other thing that I kind of just want to bring to everybody's attention is, yes, these are, these are complicated and complex issues, and I hear what you're saying with regards to, you know, some of these grant projects, where it really is, we celebrate if we can get an intersection fixed, but this across the community isn't enough for our residents with disabilities. That being said, I think that we have within our ranks the capacity and bandwidth and the intellect to work towards a solution. So, you know, as you were just saying, Consulor Zarrett, you know, the Public Safety Committee certainly is engaged in these areas and can play a role. You know, we have a very talented public works department that could also participate in this process with the Commission on Disability, and then, you know, I wonder if the mayor would be able to, you know, leverage some positional authority as a member of the PVTA Advisory Board. So, you know, I think among us, we have the capability to work towards some of these solutions, and I'd like to see us actually progress, because, you know, even as a person who does not have a disability when it comes to walking around the community, I also have shared some of these observations myself. So, yes, we would be solving problems for our residents who have disabilities, but this would benefit every single person in our community to have these types of things in place as well. So this is an everyone's solution. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, I really appreciate that.
Any other councilor? Consulor Peak?
Thanks for this presentation, Eli, it's really great. I had a couple things. One that I wanted to say is, just when we go to, when you do the next survey, well, this is a little bit contrasting with what you just said about sort of just choosing these little projects strategically. Unfortunately, right now, like, just the way that the budgeting is set up with the state, that's kind of where we are, is like, we don't have a lot of money, and we have to all go separately, each municipality to the state, and beg for the money to fix one little project, and the act of begging is itself this huge thing. So it's just an unfortunate situation that we're in, and I agree with you on that. Two things I would like to see, and I've made similar things of other sort of advisory committees like this. The first is, when it does come to those projects, I'd be really interested in hearing from this community about specific, I mean, there was some stuff in there about Cottage, you know, Cottage Street and whatnot, really specific projects. If we have to prioritize, what are the things that we can really do? And the other thing that I'm really interested in hearing about is, what are other communities, particularly communities in Massachusetts, doing better than us? That's an area where I would love That's an area where I, I would love to, to get some information is, hey, these people are doing this and that's worked really well. This is a pilot program somebody else is doing. Like, what's, what's successful? What are, what are things that we could really be striving towards? Because, like, I, I think that this is all really valuable, but I, I'm left with it, sort of not personally feeling like I know exactly what the next step should be to address any of these problems. I think we can all agree that they're problems. I, I just would, if there's things out there that should be, that we should be doing, that other people are doing, that have been successful in meeting the needs of these people, that's something I would love to hear about from the commission because I just, I feel like we've been having this conversation for a while now, and, you know, I noted the frustration in what you said earlier, and I think we share that. I, I just, like, that, that would be for me, like, you know, what, what would you think would be like a next step in addressing some of these issues now that we've identified them? I'd love to hear more about that as, as this goes on. I'm not putting you on the spot right now, I'm just.
Yeah, so that's a good question, and unfortunately, I, I don't have any information about that for you.
Any other councilor?
I just want to.
Councilor Denham?
Thanks, Mr. President. Again, great presentation, I really appreciate.
Thank you.
What you had to say. And on one hand, I'm, I'm left saddened, right? Because we live in a society that repeatedly reinforces how not inclusive we are of, of people, right? And as Counselor Peak was saying, you know, we're left begging for money so that we can have citizens that participate. And, and it's also, it's a systemic problem, right? It's, it's not putting resources at the state level in places that our citizens need that, right? And so, you know, I would like to be supportive and have some understanding about how can we be advocates at the state level to increase some of those, that support. I think it's one thing for us to try to apply for grants and things like that, but there's, there's a much larger issue that's, that's at play here, and, and I would like to, to be an advocate for that and to be able to work with you, to be able to, to, to just be more intentional at a, at the state level to be able to get, to get more funding for residents, not just in East Hampton, but just across the state. This is clearly an issue, it's clearly a problem, and we really need to be thinking, as you said, kind of more outside the box in terms of how we're going to be solving these issues. But it's, has, as Counselor Riley said, you know, it's not unseen. Like, my sidewalk is so ratty, and that goes to the high school, right? And so I couldn't even imagine students with accessibility needs trying to navigate that particular sidewalk, down a hill, ratty, uneven, narrow, right? And it's around the city in, in that particular way, right? So I just, I, I, I want to be an advocate.
Yeah, well, I, I really appreciate that. It would be, it would be great. I'd be, we'd all be very happy to, to talk to you more about this. Yeah, and as another example, one, one of our members said that, yeah, when he was in school, if there was a day that it snowed, he just couldn't go to school that day.
Mm-hmm.
Right, it was just, that was just, you know, that's just how it was.
Thank you, Eli. Any other councilor?
I just want to say thank you, Eli, thank you, Angelique, thank you on the Commission on Disability. I think Counselor Denham mentioned something really important, and every time that we hear politicians talking is inclusion, inclusion, inclusion. This is the time to include the, our disability community in our conversations and, and our projects. It's really important for this committee to be heard, and we're here for them too. Thank you again, Eli, great presentation. I will take a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to open a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes. First item that we have is for Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have actually two issues within our one request here. And so I'll, I'll take the off-street parking section first and explain this. So we have some zones in town, neighborhood business, where some pre-existing buildings that were built before zoning took place and didn't have what we would consider today, according to our zoning, appropriate parking in order to meet the minimum threshold for required parking spaces for those areas. Now, if there's a business in that area now that is operating, grandfathered in, it continues to operate, but if it, if there's a change in that business and someone else wants to open a space there, there's literally pretty much nothing that can go into these spaces. They're, they're dead zones. Like, the only thing you literally could do is tear it down and maybe put it in a parking lot. And so we think that there's probably more creative ways to be able to address this particular issue. So what we proposed was that the permit granting authority would be allowed to consider amending the requirement for parking at these particular places. We did have a joint meeting with the Planning Board where they voted unanimously in favor of this, and we voted two to one, two to one abstention in favor of this, you know? And I think one of the things was just giving the, the ability to think out of the box and be creative to the permit granting authority made a lot of sense. So that's the first piece. And the second piece is, is very, very simple. And so this would be for pre-existing non-conforming, non-residential structures. This would allow the permit granting authority to basically allow for changes and streamline the permitting for any changes within one entity. So for example, someone wants to change something, they're going to have to go to the Planning Board, which then they're going to have to pay for an advertising, and then they're going to have to go to the ZBA, and they're going to have to pay for another legal ad. So it ends up, for doing one simple thing, it ends up costing, you know, an absorbent amount of money because you have to advertise it in multiple different places. What this would do is it would consolidate into the permit granting authority being able to make that decision and saying, you don't actually have to go to the second step, we feel that this is okay, and that it basically streamlines the process. So again, this was something that Planning Board approved unanimously and that we, I believe this one was three to, three to zero because we could all vote on this one. And I'm happy to entertain any questions, and Tom is an expert, Brad is an expert as well on this because we've dealt with it for a while. So any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Any councilor?
Oh, go ahead. I was just, I was going to provide one comment, but I'll, I'll wait.
I'll defer because his comment may, his being part of the process, I just wanted to hear it first.
Councilor Riley?
Okay, all right, thank you. It might not, but it's okay. Thank you. So, you know, I think really, it's just one of these scenarios, and, you know, when municipalities in New England advance over the course of, you know, 200-plus years, there are bound to be ordinance issues that just lose their relevancy. And this is one of those scenarios. We have buildings in East Hampton and lots that were created before automobiles were even created, you know what I mean? So, you know, when, when modernization reaches certain thresholds, sometimes we need to reconsider what the ordinance and zoning processes look like, and this is just one of those scenarios. So, you know, I, I completely support the amendments. This is just bringing East Hampton a little bit further into the future, and also I think there, you know, when I was engaged in the School of Reuse Committee, there were conversations about making East Hampton more walkable. And some of these properties that fall under these guidelines are in areas that would increase walkability in East Hampton's neighborhoods. So this solves two problems at the same time. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor Sarat?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the second part I completely understand, I support, you know, reducing needless work by committees as well as reducing barriers to entry by creating fees that don't make, really make sense, like, I a hundred percent support that, we want to be business-friendly, and also acknowledging that, again, some of these buildings existed before the residences around them existed or the zoning existed that made them a residential neighborhood. I get that. And I think I understand the first part, but I just, I, I apologize, I might need just more of an explanation because I, that seems more of a ZBA type of thing, but I, it's, I don't, I, I don't quite understand it. Could you explain it again? Like, I, I don't quite get it.
So I, I would just say really quick, and then I'll pass it over to Tom. This, this would change the ordinance that, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, that this would allow the ZBA to consider this.
Oh, okay.
Right? So Tom, I guess I would pass it over to you.
That's totally correct. There's certain cases, and the reason why I can't vote on this is that an organization that I'm helping is, has faced a situation like this. There are certain buildings in East Hampton that the building is the footprint. There is zero place in them for any off-street parking. You could not do it, there is no possible way to do it. Right now, that sort of thing is, there's just not, unless you're in the smart growth zone, there's no provision whatsoever that would allow them to waive the parking requirement. Now, what people have done at some points in the past is apply for variances. I'm not a land use lawyer, so I'm not going to claim to fully understand this, but the general position of the city planner and of the current ZBA and of, I guess, most people in this field is that that is not an appropriate use of a variance, that a variance should, there's really a, a very specific set of circumstances under which a variance is allowed, and overly restrictive zoning that was built around, you know, the expectation that every single person is going to have a car to go everywhere that they ever go on for the rest of time, that's not going to completely disrupt, I digress. That sort of thing is not, that's not a variance problem. You know, there, I, I couldn't exactly tell you off the top of my head, there's, there's like four specific characteristics for, that a variance might meet, and this maybe meets three, but it's, in this sort of case, it really, that's not an appropriate use for the variance process. So even if you were to go through that very labor-intensive process of requesting a variance, there's still a very high chance they would say no. So all this does, the, who the permit granting authority is depends on the particular zone and the particular type of, of buildings. It's either the permit, the, the, sorry, the Planning Board or the ZBA depending. All it does is it says that if you're applying for a special permit to operate this sort of business, that, or, or plan approval or whatever it is, that you can go to them and say, listen, this building, there's no plausible way to put in parking. This project will not be possible without this sort of allowance, and here are the factors that you should consider. For example, an abundance of off-street parking. In two particular cases that I'm aware of, one on Pleasant Street and one on Parson Street where the development of a project was stopped by this sort of thing, there is abundant off-street parking. On, on well-plowed main roads is abundant off-street parking. And so you could easily make the case that, look, there's, there's enough, or sorry, like on-street parking, there's enough on-street parking that there's no reason why we need a parking lot here. It's, this isn't issue, this isn't Cottage Street, this won't be a problem. And at that point, the ZBA or the Planning Board would have the authority to either accept or reject that argument, you know? And there might be cases, I, I think that, you know, the argument comes of, well, what about this, this case or that case where this, well, you know, at that, at those times, the, the permit granting authority would have the right to say, no, I actually do think this is going to be a huge traffic thing, and I don't think that the nearby traffic or the, you know, public parking within walking distance or whatever, I don't think that that really actually covers this issue, so we're going to deny you your permit. And then that person is in the exact same situation that they currently are in by default, but this at least gives them an opportunity to make a case that perhaps in this specific case, it's not feasible, and they should be granted a waiver.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, that makes, that makes more sense, thank you.
Any other councilor? Councilor Denham?
I just, I think it's such a, we had this presentation just a minute ago, right, of transportation. I think it's just a, and, and the comment that was made of really thinking very broadly about transportation, how these impact different offices and programs and things like that. And so, you know, I, I support this, but, but again, it's, this is how we end up making decisions piecemeal, right? And so I just, I'm just kind of saying that as a, as an observation of here we are struggling with transportation and now here this is before us. And, and in some ways, we're, we're trying to solve a problem, but we're also thinking piecemeal. So I'm just kind of putting that out there.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Anyone from the public that want to participate about amending zoning ordinance? Seeing none, Councilor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend the city zoning ordinance, Section 10.1, off-street parking to create a Section 10.15 waivers, and Section 11.13, pre-existing non-conforming, non-residential structures, to insert special permit granting authority to Sections A and B.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend zoning ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against, abstention?
Abstention.
Motion passes. Second item is supplemental appropriation, Councilor Rest.
We have before us a Community Preservation Act appropriation of $400,000. This is to reimburse the city who is, which is now conducting a major renovation of the pool. Our pool is fairly old and this is long overdue. Rec director, Parker Rec Director Mason is on, and he'll expand on my comments. But what I wanted to say specifically, well, there's two phases. The first phase, which is undergoing the, the major pool, the pool itself and, you know, all of the construction elements on that, is about $936,000, $936,000, and that's the first phase. And then there's a second phase, which is the shade structures, tables, amenities. That is a separate construction, and that'll be funded with more free cash. But the funding for the first phase of this project includes six, almost, 590,000 or almost $600,000 of Community Preservation Act funding, if you approve it this evening. I'm proud of that. It means the CPA, which is taxpayer money dedicated to three different tenants, one of which is open space and recreation approval, is being used as it was intended. We have done so many projects for this city that improve the quality of life, and with the kind of heat that's hitting our planet, having a pool accessible, very much accessible to all of our residents is vital. And I'm very proud of the Park and Rec Department, they kept it going this, this summer, even though they, they had to rush to get pumps and things like that to keep it open, but now it'll be renovated, and Mr. Mason promises it'll be done for the next summer. So, Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like Mr. Mason to expand on anything about this appropriation.
Mr. Mason?
Hi, everyone. I'm in a commission meeting as well during this time, they just happened to cross over this evening, but I'm happy to talk about the project. Yeah, we, we, this project with the state grant of $400,000 has to be completed by June 1. If you get a chance to swing down into the park, you can see how much construction's already been done for this, for this phase one of removing the, the concrete, getting everything staged for new filtration, piping and, and all that. So, yes, we, we're coming off a very successful pool season. We had some trouble with mechanical issues, but all in all, we, we handled those well, and, and the pool was back. and the pool was back with more lifeguards than we had pre-pandemic. So it was very encouraging, and I think moving forward with having a new facility will only make our workspace there more attractive for lifeguards and folks to come visit the park.
Thank you. Anyone, any Consulor have any questions or comment? Consulor Derby?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I'm really happy to see this moving forward. I mean, I think some of the people that have been on the council with me for the long haul know that this was one of my things that I was really concerned about in my early days. And I remember coming to, I think it was a block grant meeting up in this space when we first moved into this space with, I think, maybe Stuart Beckley, talking about, you know, what we would like to see for the city. And at the time, I was, my family, you know, I had small kids, we would spend every single day at the pool. And it was an amazing thing for a resource for us to have. And, you know, seeing this go forward, having that space upgraded, and hopefully encourage more families and people to go be able to enjoy what a great space A, Nonotuck Park is, and B, to have the amenities in Nonotuck Park that really set us apart. And I think visually, I'm hoping, you know, it was not always the most pleasant place with cement and fence and, you know, it was very sterile. And so I'm excited to see what kind of improvements we're going to be able to, to bring to the community. And I think it's going to be beneficial to everybody. So I'm really, really pleased about this.
Thank you. Any other Consulor? Anyone from the public that want to participate in this appropriation from the CPA? Seeing none. Consulor Rest?
Before I do the motion, John, I just hope that somehow a banner can be put up that this project is heavily funded by the Community Preservation Act. I want the residents of the city who will be using this pool to know where a lot of the money is coming from in that area.
I didn't forget, and it's on my list.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
I'll make a motion for a supplemental, for the full council to approve a supplemental appropriation from the Community Preservation Act. The amount is $400,000. To be appropriated from CPA Reserve for Open Space, $120,000, CPA Undesignated Fund, $83,500, and CPA Reserve Fund, $196,500, for a total of $400,000. To be appropriated to the Nonotuck Park Pool Restoration Construction, $400,000. This is for the purpose of the final design and construction funds for the rehabilitation, restoration of Nonotuck Park Pool Surrounding Recreation Area.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $400,000 from CPA funding for final design and construction cost to rehab and restore the Nonotuck Park Pool and surrounding recreation areas. Any further discussion? Consulor Rest?
I forgot to mention that the CPA committee voted unanimously to approve this, eight to zero, and also that the finance committee also approved it, three to zero.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention? Motion passes. Consulor Rest?
$11,154. We have a transfer. This is kind of an old bill. We used to have a Veterans District in which our veteran agent was working with South Hadley. That was last year, and we were required to make a payment toward that. I think it was a quarterly payment for the whole year. And there is a final payment due, even though we are no longer in a district. We have one veterans' agent that serves only East Hampton. Now, this is kind of an old bill, so we owed South Hadley $11,154.
Any Consulors have any questions or comment? Seeing none. Anyone from the public have any question or comment about this transfer? Seeing none. Consulor Rest?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $11,154 to be transferred from 001-5440-5772 account to be transferred to 001-5430-5319 account, which is all about the Veterans District for the purpose of payment of Veterans Retirement Appropriation to South Hadley as payment of our final half for the fiscal year as the district is dissolved.
Second. I have a motion and a second for interdepartmental transfer of $11,154. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Consulor Rest?
The next is our usual quarterly payment for Spectrum and Charter Media to pay for our, what do you call it, East Hampton Media Services. The PEG Access account comes in and goes back out. We have to do this every quarter. It's the same amount of money. So it's pretty straightforward.
Any Consulor have any questions or comment? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment about this one? Seeing none. Consulor Rest?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $52,736.65 to be transferred from the PEG Access account, $52,736.65 to be transferred to the PEG Access account, $52,736.65, to give approval to spend from the PEG Access Receipts Reserved account for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement.
I have a motion and a second for interdepartmental transfer of $52,736.65. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Consulor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have before us a request to petition the state to change the speed limits on North Hampton Street. This came about from a very well-written and informed letter from our engineer, Mr. Murphy, one of our engineers, Mr. Murphy. If I'm understanding this correctly, there is, prior to this, it was very difficult for municipalities to change the speed limits on state roads. But there was recently, in early 2023, a new law that was created to allow cities to at least petition the state traffic engineer to reduce speed limits. In this specific case, we're talking about the, almost the entire length of North Hampton Street, essentially from, I think, West Street to, actually, even before West Street, to the town line with North Hampton. As you all know, there was a recent pedestrian tragedy there. There were two people killed. And we're also well aware that that corridor is undergoing massive development as really our only commercial zone, so to speak, highway business district, with the co-op going in, Cumberland Farms, recently the Starbucks, the discussion about some, a large mixed residential area. And there are still number of parcels there that I would imagine, as property becomes scarce, people look more and more to those. So our city engineer wrote a proposal that creates three distinct zones of speed reduction, a reduction of speed from 35 to 25 between West Street and Florence Road, reduction of speed from 40 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour between Florence Road and around the area of Abashon Hardware, and then from north of Abashon to the North Hampton City Line, reduction from 45 to 35. As everyone also knows, right now, we have very poor pedestrian and bike infrastructure there. Hopefully, that will get upgraded. But regardless, we need to be thinking about the safety of our residents, our motorists, our pedestrians, and everyone else accessing the road. This was, this had minimal discussion in public safety in the sense that this was an expert and well-put-together recommendation. None of us had any concerns about it, and we voted three nothing to recommend. But our, Mr. Murphy is here. Mr. President, I would recommend that he be allowed to speak to expand on this more.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I'll just say.
Can you please go to the podium?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I'll just say, so it's, the existing signs are all there, and basically what it means is, for those three zones, we're taking the existing speed limit, dropping it 10 miles an hour in the exact same locations, using the exact same signpost. So it's basically all the way through. I expanded on a little bit, as you know, you drive it, you see there's not really good bike infrastructure. Sidewalks are bad in some locations, some places there isn't any. So I kind of went through that. I looked at the shoulders. I looked at everything. And for me, with the state going for a healthy policy directive, transportation, trying to get people out in the streets, and plus that's such a busy corridor, I just thought it made sense to make this request, put it to the state and see if they'll honor it. The one thing I will tell you that's ongoing, and we just got news on, is that they are going to put, the state is going to put in two crossings, and it'll start as early as beginning of October. One between Mountainview and Groveland, and the second one up at Valley Apartments. So those will be RFPs, and they'll actually be, they're going to be paving it and making kind of dedicated places for buses to stop. So the buses will stop, and there'll be a crosswalk right there, which was a big reason we had the fatalities. So that's, that's it in our field.
Thank you. Any Consulor have any questions or comments? Consulor Peak?
I'm always in favor of this sort of thing, but just as a question.
Sure.
Do you foresee, I mean, so my understanding of sort of traffic flow, and I'm not an engineer at all, from what I've read about this, is people tend to drive as fast as they feel safe driving.
Yeah.
And so if we lower the speed limit?
Yeah.
Are we gonna, is there plans to do any sort of traffic calming measures to make the environment feel like one that you should drive lower on, or we just plan to hand out more tickets?
Well, I think it's just, it's just one, one method. I mean, as you know, you may know, the state is working on a design for that whole corridor, and of course, we'll be, I'll be pushing, and I'm sure they're working on trying to calm that street as well. So it's just one approach, and it's an easy one we could ask for. Especially we're putting in new crossings, I think it's a good idea just to slow everything down and get ready. I mean, the two crossings they're putting in, the state is putting in, they fully understand they're temporary. They're doing it with bituminous concrete, not, not concrete itself. So they know these crossings may shift, may move a little bit as part of the bigger project. But the calming is definitely the key component. I mean, I always talk about, when I first came to the city, I used to drive through Cottage, and I'd get, why is it so tight? I hate this. I hate this. And I'd drive through it. But over time, I came to realize that if you want to calm people, Cottage Street is the example I gave everybody. You drive 40 on most roads. When you get to Cottage Street, you go 20, because you have to, because there's only 20 feet between parked cars. I mean, you get 10, that's it. And, you know, we've got 12-foot lanes, 14-foot lanes. We just did Hoyock Street, we put 10-foot painted lanes down. And I hope, I hope you guys take a look, see how it feels. I always get the sense you definitely drive a little bit slower when you're, when you're constrained. Even though it's paint, it's something, and it helps, and every little bit helps.
Thank you. Any other Consulor? Consulor Denim?
I just have a quick question. So the pink crosswalks in, are those going to also entail like flashing?
Yeah, the RFPs. Yeah, yeah, of course.
Consulor Riley?
That was my question.
Okay.
It's one thing to put a crosswalk down, but if you're trying to signal, I just want to make sure that they're, you know, going to be seen.
So, you know, I won't speak for other Consulors, but I imagine this is true. One of the biggest dynamics that I think we do when we do Q and A with the public is that there is a portion of the public that feels that we are driving too fast, and then there is an equal percentage of the public that thinks that traffic congestion is a problem.
Of course.
So, you know, I am always going to be on the side of physical safety, so I'm in support of this. Do you, and I don't understand the, I guess, the engineering dynamics. Maybe you can explain. So, you know, assuming the growth that we have that's coming to this area, and we reduce the speed limit, that's going to naturally increase congestion in that area? Or is that, you know, can you speak to that a little bit? Because I think what I really want to be able to do is, you know, when the inevitable concerns come in from whichever side of the, the community weighs in, I want to be able to engage in that conversation with them in a way that they understand why we are doing what we're doing.
For the speed limit, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, sure. I guess I'd say it this way. I know that the, I'm not, my background, I never, I didn't come up as a traffic engineer, but I've learned a lot on the way, especially on the municipal side. They use the 85% rule a lot, and again, it goes back to the design of the road. If the road's designed to slow people down, they're going to drive slower. If you have big wide lanes and no shoulders, and big shoulders, without sidewalks, you drive faster. So as far as the congestion, the way I think about it, my goal, and we're looking at Main Street now, is I want to keep traffic moving, but I want to keep it moving slowly, particularly where you have pedestrians. I mean, and so we have to think about that. If we think about, like, on Main Street, we're thinking about maybe putting a light as part of a park chaining. But that, that will definitely slow people down. And part of me goes, well, I'm trying, I think about this all the time. Is that a good thing for pedestrians? Is it better to have things going slow and have more stops? I mean, the average speed will definitely go down. But then you have to balance that with people wanting to get through. You don't want to have a mile-long backup. So you have to consider all that. And so for North Hampton Street, I'm sure, you know, if we look at doing, lowering the speed limits, that will have some effect. So when they're doing their new design, they should take all that into account. Would a roundabout work here? Would a, you know, can they sync the lights? There's approaches they can take to help make it work.
Okay.
That's, that's my answer, I guess.
Right. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Consulor Denim?
I just wanted to add to that, slow traffic, moving by, then that creates also the issue of idling, right? And then we're talking about our environment, et cetera. So I just kind of want to make sure that we acknowledge that as well, that.
Of course.
Any other Consulor? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Consulor Sarret?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend the East Hampton, no, that's not it. Sorry. I move that the city council petition the state to reduce the speed limit on certain sections of North Hampton Street, State Route 10, as indicated below and shown on the map made available through the city council for the August 2, 2023 meeting. One, reduce speed limit from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour between West Street and Florence Road, section A on the map. Two, reduce speed limit from 40 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour between Florence Road and just north of Abashon Hardware, section B on the map. Three, reduce speed limit from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour between just north of Abashon Hardware and the North Hampton City Line, section C on the map.
Second. I have a motion and a second to request to petition the state to change the speed limit on North Hampton Street, Route 10. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Communication for elected officials. Consulor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few quick things, and I just want to clarify that I'm not responding to an earlier public speak item. This was something I was already wanted to talk about. I just want to acknowledge the, really, the, how wonderful it was to see both the River Roads and the Mill Pond live concerts. These are two different things. I think River Roads is the first, maybe, we may have had Thunder in the Valley, but it is kind of the first unique, big, paid festival that we've had at Millside Park. And Mill Pond is ongoing. I think this is our sixth or seventh year. It's really wonderful to see how many people turn out for this. I think all, pretty much all of the vendors there were East Hampton businesses, and it was really wonderful to see, you know, money going into the pockets of East Hampton businesses. And this is a huge opportunity, too, for just economic development. I volunteered there multiple years. I see people coming as far as California and people from abroad who come specifically for this concert series. That being said, there are challenges with, with using that space. The infrastructure there is not necessarily completely amenable to large, to large events such as this on many levels. Electricity, lighting, the bathrooms are very limited. At one point, I looked up during the River Roads Festival, and the police chief and the mayor were hauling buckets of water for people to drink because their only thing there is a bubbler outside the bathrooms. And so this just points to the need to probably recognize that that space is going to probably be used more and more for events, and we probably have to start having conversations about, you know, how to best activate that space and how to, it's on both sides, though. It's not just the municipality's responsibility. It's how are we partnering with these private vendors, both to us to provide the resources, but also them to have proper expectations, and to talk about things like, should we have more of a checklist and a plan to know, to make sure there's going to be potable water for people? What's the safety plan, et cetera? So I just wanted to put that. So I just wanted to put that out there. But I also really wanted to thank Laudable Productions for continuing to bring this program into the city. Following that, we had our fourth annual Source to See cleanup with the Connecticut River Conservancy in Laudable. We had, it was our biggest one ever. We had 60 volunteers show up, 22 bags of trash, 200 pounds of trash. We collected 50 nip bottles, among other things. It's really great to see this, but it's also very sad to see still how much trash we're accumulating. But I'm just very grateful for the turnout and the participation there. September 30th is our first-ever Porch Fest. This is a collaboration between a couple residents, actually also business owners, the folks from Wake the Dead Donuts collaborated with ECA to bring this really cool, unique, new festival to East Hampton. That's the 30th of September from 1 to 5. That will meet in the parking lot or soon to hopefully develop park behind Parsons Place off of Lincoln Street. And there's going to be multiple performers at different people's houses in the new city neighborhood, Precinct 2. And then I just wanted to acknowledge, certainly for myself, but just really to our residents and abroad, that we are in the middle of the Jewish High Holidays. This last weekend was Rosh Hashanah, which is the Jewish New Year, and we are transitioning into Yom Kippur, which is a day of atonement, which starts at sundown this Sunday and ends on sundown next Monday. So it's a time of joy, but also a time of reflection. And I say this every year as a practicing Jewish people, that certainly to our community, but also to my colleagues, if there's anything I did this year that offended you, I am deeply sorry. It's a time to open ourselves up to conversations and be open to conversations. But I also want to acknowledge that this also occurs at the same time as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I was, I'm always reflecting a meaning. And what is the meaning of the Jewish High Holidays occurring at the same time of this event? And I learned something really cool. And that is that Latinos, who are people who come from Latin American countries, there is a 25% of that group have Sephardic Jewish DNA. Now, why is that? Well, in 1492, when Columbus set forth from his journey and brought with him imperialism and colonialism, which wreaked havoc on the indigenous populations here, that was also the same date as the Jewish expulsion from Spain, and then 10 years later from Portugal. And so Jewish people fleeing persecution, religious persecution, made their way to the New World in hopes of actually finding some freedom and ended up intermingling with the populations here. Apparently, I didn't know this, but there are pockets of Latinos in various places that practice certain traditionally Jewish customs, such as not eating pork, lighting candles on Fridays, covering mirrors during times of mourning. You know, even in the New World, Jewish people seeking asylum or a better life, if it was found out that they were Jewish, they were burned at the stake. So this was interesting to me, you know, as a Jewish person, a Jewish person who sits on a professional body with a Latino person, just very curious, shared history, and just another reason to celebrate, you know, recognize kind of the power of working together in unity between different groups. And especially in this group, in this situation, two different groups that have experienced their share of persecution. So I just wanted to share that with the group, and that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councillor Sarret, any other councillor? Councillor Denham?
Yeah, I just want to just make a notice of, President Gomez and I have been working on a municipal leadership academy that we would like to start in January, that would be open to about 20 or 25 residents, just to learn about the budget process, but also learn about all the various departments in the city, and provide them an opportunity to kind of learn about those things, explore kind of issues that, and challenges that departments are facing, but also how they use their funds, et cetera. And so we'll just be working on putting some advertisement out for that so that people can sign up. And then hopefully, in January, we would start that. And it would just be an opportunity for people to learn more about city government. But also, it would be an opportunity for folks to also learn about different boards that are within the city so that hopefully that could generate some recruitment and also interest, desire to be able to be a part of those committees and work on bettering the city. So I just wanted to make that note.
Thank you. Any other councillor? Councillor Rest?
I will be brief. I want to congratulate all of you. As Councillor Denham reminded me, in January, you all will be on the council because you all have no opposition to your retention, which is sad on the one hand, but good in the sense that you all are experienced. And I thank you all for your service because, to me, experience and continuation, especially in times where civil discourse can be uncivil at many times, is so valuable to this community. So I congratulate you all for being on the ballot and not necessarily being opposed. Thank you for your work for the city.
Thank you, Councillor Rest, and thank you. Any other councillor? Seeing none, Mayor's Communication, Mayor's not here tonight with us. Correspondent from, or announcement from the President of Vice President, Mr. President, I just want to say something really quick, and I will say it in Spanish. Hace cinco días empezó el mes de la herencia hispana y solamente quiero decirle aquellos que pavimentaron el camino para que un jibarito de puertorrique tuviese aquí sentado. Gracias, muchas gracias. I just want to say, I just want to translate what I said. Five days ago, I started Hispanic Heritage Month. I just want to say thank you for those Latinos and Hispanics who paved the road for someone like me to be sitting here today. I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate it for the hard work that you did. Responses of Standing Committee, Finance?
Finance Committee has no report and will not be having a meeting this week. As usual, we have nothing on our agenda that needs attention immediately. The tax classification will be dealt with at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councillor Sarret?
Thank you. We have not met since the last meeting. We are meeting again the first Tuesday of October at 6:00 PM. I don't have a particular department that will be providing a quarterly review, but I might talk to FIRE. They're always very eager to come and present. I have not heard from any new organizations about our resolution against antisemitism. Again, I had offered a, basically a two-month period of time to try to get some feedback, preferably from our local non-Jewish organizations here in East Hampton, hoping to hear from them and bring this forward in the middle of November. I need, I would like to request a 90-day extension on the Ordinance Review Committee's final report at this time. That's a motion.
Can you please do these two of them?
Is it the roadway interest factor? It's not too, sorry.
Extension, extension.
Well, I think that's, is that a standing item, much like?
I believe so, because she doesn't have a second date next to her.
Oh, that's fine, you're right. Just one. I have a motion and a second to extend that you say 90 days?
Yes, please.
For 90 days? Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
And again, the next meeting is the first Tuesday in October, which is, I'm sorry, I will tell you the exact date. That is the 3rd at 6:00 PM, and thus concludes.
Thank you. Appointments, Councillor Riley?
All right, so the first thing that I did want to say is, in the past, these reports have been long. And when we have, you know, five or more appointees, I tend to talk a lot. So I'm going to try to streamline this process a little bit and save questions until the end for each person. So the Appointment Committee last met on September 14th to discuss five mayoral appointments. Our first appointee is David Kutcher to the East Hampton City Arts with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025. You all may remember David from his appointment to the EDIC late last year. But just to refresh your memory, he owns two businesses in East Hampton. He's a website design and digital marketing professional and a curator of antique Japanese block art through his business, Moonlit Seeprints. He also has previous experience serving four years on the board of North Hampton's City Arts, two of which he was the chair. He said that he would like to increase open studio hours in the mill for East Hampton's Art Walk and connect visitors to the greater artist community if he's appointed. And then next, we had Michael Showstedt to the East Hampton Cultural Council with a term expiration date of September 20th, 2026. Michael is a local collage artist who also hosts traveling events called Cut Loose, and these take place around Massachusetts. He has experience in event planning, grant writing, and a strong connection to the Massachusetts art community. He expressed a willingness to collaborate with EDIC to host art installations in vacant storefront locations as an option. And that was something that we had considered in lieu of fines for commercial property owners. So this supports our own ordinances. Both David and Michael could not attend the Appointment Committee meeting because that Thursday was Art Walk, and both of them had previously booked engagements. I spoke with both of them on the phone for these conversations, and the committee voted 3-0 to recommend their appointments. In addition to Michael Showstedt, the mayor is appointing Chandler France and Nancy Natale to the East Hampton Cultural Council with term expiration dates of September 20th, 2026. Chandler is engaged in a wide array of artistic endeavors. He is an actor, a writer, illustrator, and graphic designer who wants to take the next step in his career by serving on the cultural council and expressed a desire to engage in the governance process in East Hampton. Nancy is a former cultural council member in the communities of Somerville and Ashfield and brings a solid understanding of mass cultural council practices that will benefit our community as we are in the process of rebuilding the cultural council team. They also were recommended for appointment with a vote of 3-0. And then finally, the committee met with Alexis Hosea Abbott, who is being considered for the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. Alexis has been a visiting contributor to this committee for over a year and received support from the committee's Chair Clerk La Bombard, excuse me. She is a member of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's Subcommittee for Biking and attends Metropolitan Planning Organization meetings. She currently works for Mass Bike, and as a member of the committee, she would like to identify ways for East Hampton to provide bike paths to some of our decentralized but essential city institutions. One example would be the post office. The Appointment Committee also recommended her appointment with a vote of 3 to 0. So are there any questions about any of these appointees?
Any councillor have any questions? Seeing none, Councillor Riley?
Okay, then I move to appoint David Kutcher to the East Hampton City Arts with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025. Chandler France, Michael Showstedt, and Nancy Natale to the East Hampton Cultural Council with a term expiration date of September 20th, 2026. And Alexis Hosea Abbott to the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those mayor appointments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against, abstention, motion passes, Councillor Riley?
And the Appointment Committee will meet next on September 28th at 6:00 PM. And the meeting space here, Conference Room 2, behind City Council chambers, and thus concludes.
Thank you, councillor. Ordinance, Councillor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance will meet October 10th at 6:00 PM in a space to be determined here at 50 Payson. We will be reviewing the senior tax work-off program, the LED sign ordinance. And I imagine we will also discuss the item that we are going to be adding in new business as well, which is adding a public health inspector. So I just want to let everybody know that, thus concludes.
Thank you, Councillor Derby. Property, Councillor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. Property is meeting tomorrow at 5:30 outside of the mill buildings. We'll be meeting outside of Daily Operation, which is behind the Pleasant Street Mills, in this case, behind Eastworks. This will be to discuss at Eastworks easement revision request. Again, that's 5:30 behind Daily Operation, and thus concludes.
Thank you, councillor. Rules, Councillor Rest?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm bringing forward for vote this evening a ranked choice ballot question. It is a non-binding question, which the Rules Committee reviewed for a number of meetings, presented by Councillor Peak. Just a little history. When we last did ranked choice voting, we did it for single winner races, the mayor and the precinct councillors. And it was adopted by first going through a long charter review, which was also with other charter questions, which we had to have the state legislature approve. After a long session, legislature approved it, and then we brought it to the citizens for a ballot because it's required by our charter that we, any change in our charter that deals with elections must be approved by the voters. So this is a different process. And the reason for this is, as Councillor Peak presented, and of course, Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we wanted to get an idea of what the community thinks of this new multi-winner race addition to the charter to have all of our races, especially our multi-winner races, be ranked choice voting. If this ballot question is approved by the voters, then we would proceed with, or the council would proceed with a charter amendment and go through the process. And maybe, I say probably, have to go to the voters again. But if it is declined by the voters, then that tedious process would not have to be done. So this gives us a chance to understand how the community feels. If you look at the current ballot for the school committee, ranked choice voting in this case would be very valuable. And as we found out, when we had to appoint new members to the school committee through the convention that we did this past year, ranked choice voting is valuable in that case. It was well-used, and I think a lot of the public got it. So what we have before you, the language which was in the packet, it was originally also brought to the city attorney, and this is something that gives the residents a chance to understand why we think it's valuable. With your permission, Councillor Peak probably wants to have some comments on it.
This is the report from Rules, but because this is a proposal from Councillor Peak. Councillor Peak?
Councillor Rest, you did an awesome job summing that up. I think that this is something where I thought about the process that we had last time, where we handled the crafting of a legislative petition and then went to the legislature. And I think I was on the phone with somebody in the state legislature every day for about three months, trying to get them to pass it in time. They passed it literally the last possible day for us to take a vote as a city council to put it on the ballot. And then we had this very abbreviated time to put it out there. It passed with about 55, 56% of the vote, which is almost the exact same percentage that, one year later, the statewide ballot question, which did not pass statewide. But here, it passed by almost the same amount, which indicates to me that we have a stable population that is in favor of the idea of ranked choice voting. When we initially implemented it, there was a sense that perhaps we should do multi-winner as well. But we were concerned that the implementation would be difficult. We now know from the ranked choice voting ad hoc committee that now that we have the machines, the implementation is pushing a button that says, yes, do it for these races, too. At which point, my general thought is that it's probably more... too, at which point my general thought is that it's probably more complicated to have ranked choice voting for some races and then pick four, and the top four win for other races than it would be to tell a voter to just go in and rank your candidates from your favorite to your least favorite, or as many as few as you want on all of these ballots. I think, to me, that is actually simpler. There's a question outstanding from the side of the legislature, where they have, irrespective of what our own charter says, they make a determination internally about whether or not something needs to go to the ballot. We put a second question to them of things that we sort of, for shorthand, called like housekeeping items, that they did not require to go to the voters. One thing that I am curious about for our own benefit, but also for the benefit of many, many other communities who, like us, sometimes use legislative petitions to address, to make amendments to their charter without going through the extremely expensive and time-consuming process of a formal charter committee or charter commission, would be if we go to the voters ahead of time and ask them, should we petition the legislature to do this? And the voters, not just, this is an idea, we explicitly say in the language, should we petition the legislature to do this? And the voters say yes, and then we send it to them. Will the legislature then send it back to us to vote a second time when we specifically already have asked the voters in a normal general election about this? I don't know how they're going to respond, and I think that, you know, Counselor Rest is made clear that, you know, he's somewhat skeptical that they will accept this as a argument. I frankly am too, because I don't think our state legislature acts largely in terms of logic or doing the right thing. But I also do think that it's worth starting a conversation about that, because there's lots of communities, since we passed it in East Hampton, I know I've been ranting for a little while now, since we passed it in East Hampton, there's been a number of communities that have come to us, to me, and said, hey, you did that. We'd really like to do a thing just like that. I'd be like, cool, when's your next election? Oh, well, it's in four months. I'm like, well, then you can do it in two years and four months, because there's just no way to just, like, there's, you've got, it's a lobbying effort. It's really an extensive thing. I think that if a community were able to somewhat more cheaply just say, hey, voters, is this something that you care about? And then they were to accept that as an indication that, you know, that the voters wanted to, it could actually save municipalities, not just us, but the other 350 of them, a ton of time and effort going through this entire process of lobbying them, only to bring it to the voters and potentially be shot down. So I don't know if it's going to work or not, but when I was talking to people with the school committee thing, I had a bunch of people say, oh, well, at least we've got ranked choice voting for it. Now, look, I guess bad for you, we don't. And so I thought, well, let's put it to the voters right next to example A of why I believe we should have it, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Good. And by the way, we're going to use ranked choice voting in this election for precinct five, so.
It's true, because if somebody wanted to write in a candidate and then rank the remaining, or put someone first and then put a write-in second, they have that ability under our ranked choice voting thing, and that actually makes us unique. No one else does that, but I think it's a good idea.
I think so, too. Counselor Denham?
I resign for that reason.
Just kind of as a, what education can we do as a council moving forward so that people are prepared to answer this question, residents are prepared, voters are able to answer the question?
Sure.
I have an answer. Please, counselors, Counselor Peak, myself, Counselor Denham, we've been involved with this for a while, but get very familiar with why we want to do this, because what the residents are going to do, are going to call us.
Correct.
Okay? They're going to say, why do we, why should I do this? So use the school committee as an example, the school committee ballot, and say, look, if you had a choice then, now maybe your second or third choice would become. Anyway, it's up to us to get out there, and I'm not saying walk around the street and say, do you have any questions? But we might get a phone call.
Counselor Rest?
Okay. Barbara emailed me from, or texted me from her clerk convention, and they said they were discussing ballot questions, and you can't title the ballot question ranked choice voting. You have to title it question one, non-binding. So I'm going to use this motion, and I'll go slowly, Mary Ann, so that it doesn't use the term as a titled ranked choice voting. It's question one. That's what she said has to be on it. I move that the full council approve the inclusion of a non-binding question on the November 2023 municipal ballot as presented this evening to the full council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to add this question on the ballot. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against abstention? Motion passes.
You got that, Mary Ann? I have no other...
Let's conclude. Thank you. There will be new business, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some new business to amend city ordinances, classification and pay plan, to add a public health inspector. I would move to send that to the ordinance committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send this item to ordinance committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against abstention? Motion passes.
We also have two mayoral appointments, and I would move that we send the appointment for Sean Collins to the East Hampton Cultural Council with the term expiration, October 4th, 2026, and Joe Carter to the East Hampton Cultural Council, October 4th, 2026, to the Appointment Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the two mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against abstention? Motion passes.
And the tax classification hearing memo from the principal assessor, I imagine that we'd send that to finance. So I would move to send that to finance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send the tax classification hearing memo from the principal assessor to the finance committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against abstention? Motion passes. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, for those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against abstention? Motion passes. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
We have to sign documents, guys.